To call the commission meeting to order, would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone that's in attendance tonight. Commissioners, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any amendments to that? Or are we good?
Mr. Mayor, I am good with the agenda.
I'm good, have no revisions.
All right, then I entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Item two, presentation. This is a certificate of appreciation for Megan Robbins for service on the Police Chief Advisory Committee. Hi, Megan, how are you?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Megan is one of our original founding members, so I thought it fitting that we recognize her. She's stepping down after serving for four years, and so I've got a letter of appreciation that I'm giving her, and then we're presenting her with a certificate of service and appreciation for the service you have provided our community as a founding member of the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee and serving on the committee from January 2017 to June 2021. This award is presented to Megan North Robbins.
Megan, thank you very much for the four years being at the beginning of that committee. You've provided this valuable information that the police chief and the city can incorporate. We appreciate your service and your dedication for that, and we wish you well, and maybe somewhere down the road you'll come back in another capacity on another board or committee at some time.
Absolutely, it's been my pleasure.
All right. Thank you very much, we deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Megan.
All right, gentlemen, moving along. Item number three, the consent agenda. Have both the commissioners had a chance to review the consent agenda, and do you have any modifications to this?
I have no modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm good with it also, Mayor.
All right, then I entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Moving along, we are looking at item four, items for commission action. The first item, A, consider approval of Main Street's request for patio 210 modifications.
Mayor, I have Miranda and Sean Turner here. Miranda referencing the patio 210 and Sean on the, any Main Street part of the reconstruction project.
All right.
On this project.
Sean, Miranda, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
All right, so we had a list of questions that you guys had on this, and one of them was the location of the underwalk curb drain. It's going to, from your, from the last comments that you guys had, you wanted it to connect to existing drains in that area, so we are going to have it drained from the turf area in the center of the patio and tie it into one of the downspouts that are currently on the two corners of the messenger building. So that should take care of answering your, two of those questions. The location of the electrical pedestal and type to be used, we are going to use or mimic a type of electrical pedestal that is the same that is used at Neo Walla, so that way the current population of food trucks in the area that use those at that time know how those function, and they don't take, you know, requirement or training or anything on that, they can just pop it up, put it in, and go. As far as the location, we're just trying to figure out how the use of the space at the patio is going to be in this next phase of design, and so it'll be out there closer to the east side where that drive is, because that's where the food trucks will, you know, kind of be accessing that area. But that'll allow, you know, a couple of them to park there and plug into it in the off times when there are events where they need to. But as to an exact location, we're still trying to work through that, but the area should, you know, it's going to land kind of over by where the food trucks are going to be entering and exiting from that space. And so termination of the discharge, how that is on the mountable curb, you know, there's going to be cast iron type curb caps at those locations, so when they drive up on it, they're not breaking down that curb over time, so they'll be reinforced on the surface of those. So. Is there any other questions on the patio side of that?
So the discharge for the drains, it'll be profiled to the mountable curb?
Correct.
Okay.
And right now, those downspouts, they don't appear to come out in the gutter, so we're wondering what we're going to find when we dig that up. If they are already tied to a storm sewer, then we'll just tie everything to a storm sewer somehow, but we're really not going to know until we remove the sidewalks.
Yeah, one of them on the east side, you can see it coming through the face of the curb, but what happens between there and the building?
Yeah.
Is questionable. And the, my question about the pedestal was, with the mountable curb, where it went, and then if it was permanent, how you'd protect it, but I understand what you're saying, it's going to be a removable pedestal, so only when it's needed, it'll be placed and then removed afterwards.
The concept is like what is used at Neo Walla is what we're trying to implement, so.
Okay, so that's what I, I was wondering if you've got that big of a mountable curb from the west wall of the Gold and Silver Exchange to Messenger's, that's quite an extent, and the chance of it getting damaged by a vehicle is pretty likely, so if you have it like that, that's going to control the damage, that'd be great. Okay? And the reason for the large area mountable curb so that both buildings can be serviced?
Correct. Messenger's requested that that small entrance they have, we accommodate that somehow, and so rather than switch back and forth between mountable and typical curb, we just kept that entire stretch mountable curb, and KDOT is agreeable to that.
Good. Good. I think that was the only questions I had on, on those points that you were requesting action for. I had, after looking at the drawing, I had some other questions related to the street project, I don't know, do you mind, Sean?
Not at all. I have those questions, and the first one was the existing parking layout, and yes, there are other sheets for new striping, and since we're taking out the O'Reilly entrance, it changes the striping on that entire block, and we'll restripe that accordingly.
Okay.
And then the other question, well, will it be modified to meet ADA on the roadway crown? And yes, yes it will. And then the location of the curb ramp we show versus what was suggested here, why is the ADA curb ramp located between O'Reilly's and Messenger's building property line and not near patio 210 of the pawn shop? It's not much difference between the, from the center of the block, and if the city prefers it in that location, we can move it to that location during construction, it's a little late to change the plan, but.
Yeah, and that location, since there's no activity down that far, I thought, you know, with the patio and, and access to the gold and silver, it'd be more practical to move it up, and, you know, the ADA, I guess, isn't specific that you even need it on on-street parking, but if you do provide it, it's got to comply, so that'll help. We can continue then to mark it as ADA. And then with the, with the patio, I think that would be more convenient there than down at the other end of the block.
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that in the, during construction, we have, this area's a little intense, everything going on, and we'll make sure that gets accommodated, it's not.
Yeah, just make sure there's a note that it gets moved.
Yes, yes.
That was the only questions I had. Mayor?
All right, thank you, Commissioner Koflis. Commissioner Hayes?
I'm good.
All right, you've answered the questions that Commissioner Koflis has presented, I think I'm good also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Main Street request for patio 210 and reconstruct the sidewalk in the KDOT project.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Next item, B, consider awarding the demolition of 418 South Wald Avenue.
Mayor, I have Building Inspector Tyler Henry, and I believe Demone is here too. This was requested the last commission at two weeks, and so if Tyler could come up and give your report of...
I also have someone from the public that has filled out a request to speak to the commission, which I'll bring them up here shortly.
Okay.
Tyler, go ahead.
Yep, so I received a timeline from Demone yesterday, and for the next two months, and he will get the yard cleaned up and start working on getting everything waterproofed, and then he will work on the windows, getting all of that sealed up.
He did not, he still has not fulfilled the building permit and those requests, correct?
Correct.
Is there a contractor involved in this?
The owner said that he has a contractor from Edna that will be doing the work.
Did he supply you with a name and a number?
I do not have a name.
Now, he will also have to have a city license to?
Yes, he will.
Do work within Independence?
Yep.
Okay. The timeline that was given to you as far as repairs, did that seem, what the repairs were indicated, what did that seem to you?
The damaged part of the house needs addressed also. I know part of it has been torn down already, but the rest of it will need addressed.
Have you had a chance to view the entire property?
I have gotten pictures of most of the house, inside and out, there was one room where the most fire damage was that I did not get pictures of.
Is there an estimate as far as the, the amount of repairs as far as cost to the building? Because you look at the value of a building, if the repairs and the reconstruction of that, when you're just talking about electrical and plumbing and everything else, bringing it up to code, are the resources there by the owner to, to complete the repairs, or is this just something that we were going to continue to live with for a while until something changes, something else changes?
I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure what the funding is.
Okay, there probably wasn't any insurance money on this?
As far as I know, there was not.
Okay. The cars, if I understood right, they've just changed locations?
They are moved on to the lot that was cleared a few months ago.
Okay, but they're still in the view of the neighborhood? I mean, they're not behind a fence or something that blocks the view?
No, they're not.
Okay, are there, how many, four or five cars in the lot?
There's five or six, I think.
Five or six?
Yeah.
And are they disabled?
I believe a few of them are.
Okay, so, and their purpose there is for?
I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. Well, just looking at the structure and the damage from what we see on the screen here and the number of cars, this fire, do you recall, anyone recall when this occurred? How long ago it's been?
It was, Sean, was that in... When was it, Demone?
I believe it was May 7th.
Was it May, May 7th?
Oh, 2020?
Yeah.
Okay.
21.
Oh, 2021?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. Okay, that's all the, oh, have there been any other issues since our last meeting on this two weeks ago in, in that area?
We still, I've received some complaints from the neighbors of just, when's it going to be taken care of?
Right.
Noise at night.
Right.
And those complaints, continue to get those.
Okay, all right, those are the questions I have. Commissioners, you have questions for Tyler?
Tyler, you said that you received a timeline, and does it cover each of the elements that you, you talked about, the window replacement and, and the exterior finish?
The...
And other elements of the renovation?
Yeah, there was waterproofing of the deck that, where he tore off part of the house, he was planning on making a deck there, so he was going to seal that up and then, you know, board up all the windows to make sure no more water gets in.
I'm sorry, did you say board up the windows?
I would assume that's what he was planning on doing.
So are the, wouldn't the end result be to replace or the glass and refurbish the windows before it could, I don't know, are boarded up windows per code?
It's really why we need a plan, and we've been asking for a plan of what the work he's going to do.
Well, that was the nature of my question, because I was, my expectation of the timeline is that it would be comprehensive to the degree that we could, you know, put it together and that we could be able to track it from where it is right now through completion. And I don't really know what completion means with regard to, to your, the safety and the environmentally sound.
It would have to pass an HQS inspection.
A what?
HQS inspection. In other words, Aaron would have to do an inspection, and it would have to pass to come off of the condemnation, for us to bring it back to you to release it from condemnation.
And, and as the mayor mentioned, that would include that electricity and?
Yes, we have no, there's nothing on the electricity or utilities of any timeline provided to us of restoring those parts of the structure. That has not been provided to us yet.
Okay, so that would be in addition to the timeline that you've already received?
Correct.
So this is more or less sealing the exterior from water infiltration is what we have so far?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Koflis?
Well, my concern is that what we discussed last time, the timeline hasn't been really addressed. To get, to get this submittal yesterday, it doesn't take two weeks to put that together. The building permit application has basically the address, but, and this isn't the entire building permit, if I'm...
It's, I just copied what was done, everything else was blank.
Usually the building permit requires the contractor's name, the electrician's name, plumber, and that too, which is necessary to grant a permit.
Correct.
The application and its, its form is, is not sufficient to issue a building permit. The information there is just general descriptions of renovation, sizes, and what's there, but it wasn't even completed. I, I think we haven't really seen effort put to address the, the issues at hand to, to make an aggressive renovation or even a form of securing the property from people entering.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Koflis. I'm also in agreement, things are just in generalizations that have been given as far as what kind of work would be proceeding, and we had made multiple contacts prior to two weeks ago to bring the party to the forefront to address these issues, and so we've had plenty of time to, to develop something, but just looking at the cost and everything involved here.
Mayor?
Yes?
Looking at our action when we condemn a process, once it's voted on that we have condemned, I think that notice states that the owner of the property has, is it 60 days to begin work or remove the property?
We give 60 days, then bring it back, and even after you guys then condemn it, we give another 30 days before we go out to get bids, so I mean, there's almost, close to 90 to 120 days before this comes before you guys. And he only showed up at the award of the demo bid.
Right, right.
So.
Right, he's pretty, pretty much ignored all contact with him to give him the chance to come up here.
Yes.
And provide what we needed. So, okay. I have a member of the public that would like to come up and speak to the commission, Trish Coffey? Trish, how are you?
Fine. I own property on the 400 block of South Wald. I took pictures on 619 when you guys gave him the two extra weeks, and then I took pictures last night. The only difference in some of them is that he's moved the cars from the side to that front yard. Otherwise, they look exactly the same, and I can show them to you. They look, it looks terrible. And the picture that you have up here, where the burnt part is still there, he has pulled that down, he pulled it down with a rope, and then it was just laying on the property. Part of it is gone, but 90% of it is still there. He's got a flag in his backyard, United States of America flag, that is so worn and nasty, it's embarrassing to drive by. But he can't, the windows, the doors are always open, you can see in, it's, it's terrible. He's always got rubbing up his motorcycle, driving up and down the street at 10, 10:30, he's out there working on the cars, which I thought that he was supposed to move them because the 414 built house that was there, he tried to turn into a garage, and you told him he couldn't because it's not commercial residence, but he still works on the cars all hours of the day and night, and I did not know that it was a commercial property.
All right.
I do have these pictures.
Turn them over to David here. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Do you have more pictures there, Mr. Mayor?
Oh. Sorry. I'm pretty much familiar with, with this now. It's my own neighborhood. It didn't look like that when I lived in that area. None of the neighborhood did, or most of it didn't, I guess.
David, how long is the demolition quote good for? Is it only good for a certain amount of time?
I'm sure we're still good now, usually they're good for 30 days.
Okay.
So we're, we're still...
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like these photographs back in?
I have them on my phone.
Well, I have a, I have a request to address the commission from Demone Hatch. Demone? He's left the premise?
I believe so.
All right. Well, we'll move right along then. So, gentlemen, we've reached the point of where...
Just one more thing to clarify, then, at this date, we have complied with our ordinances for time limits and all the, the notification, the proper bidding, that we're at the point to move forward.
Yes, yes, we did the, every time David Swanker and I set, and Tyler set these up, you know, we set the initial, it's always 60 days, and it comes back, and then after you guys condemn it, it's another 30 days, the code, even after you condemn a structure, the code requires you have 30 days to commence repair, and we wait that 30 days, and then we bring you the bid.
I just wanted to make sure, clarify that we are not rushing or?
No.
Short cycling our standard procedure that we're following?
We followed all the procedures.
Okay.
And David?
I thought we had, but wanted to make sure.
And David, it is, it is not unusual for, under certain circumstances where progress is being made for us to adjourn these types of hearings for an additional 60 days to give further time for compliance.
Correct.
But this is not a hearing, though.
He has not been, he has not been responsive, and if, every time we start these procedures, Tyler works, makes contact, we make sure they're informed of the hearings, if they tell us they have intentions to work, we work with them. So we set timelines and do all those things, and keep you guys informed, and we adjourn hearings, allowing them to have that time.
And significant progress is normally demonstrated during those times?
Correct, yes, correct.
Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you for that clarification, thank you for asking, Commissioner Koflis. So since Demone Hatch has left, then I'm, ask for a motion here on this.
You want a motion to, for the demolition contract, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, yes, for the demolition contract.
I move to award a demolition contract for the previously condemned structure in the amount of $8,400 to JRB Industries Incorporated pending the city attorney's review and approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. Thank you. Moving along, item C, consider authorizing the mayor to sign the National Fitness Campaign Grant Program requirements and any additional documents or resolutions related to the grant award acceptance. How are you today?
Good.
Long time no see.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
So recently, the city of Independence was notified that we are the recipient of a $50,000 award from the National Fitness Campaign to, to build a outdoor fitness court in the Central Park Sports Complex, and this was a, a grant. And this was a, a grant and an idea brought to us by a citizen of Independence and requested us to, to check out the, Kelly, do we have a video of it that we can show?
Yeah, I saw the next slide.
The, the court is, it's amazing. We'll show a video.
Just go to the center.
I also spoke about it at First Friday. But it would provide free access to an outdoor fitness center. And the, the, the center has been designed and is in hundreds of, of cities throughout the U.S. It has an app that comes with it that has, I think, it's designed for seven-minute workouts, I think. And so this, this app that comes with it can take you through all of these workouts and things like that. And the, the goal of the campaign is to provide free fitness to everyone, so that everyone has equal opportunity for, to, to practice healthy lifestyle and, and fitness goals. So, if you want to play the video real quick, Larry?
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. The two hundred fitness courts voted on campaign this fall. From college campuses to state parks and trails, we're creating a fitness program which is getting started.
Hi, I'm Mitch Managid, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy-nine when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the twenty-first century, the Fitness Court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganers, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the Fitness Court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy, that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the Fitness Court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that, from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost one point two million members across Michigan. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities for our community. So, I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools, building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
So, it's very exciting. This is something that you see in, in big cities, and I think it's
We're changing the way America thinks.
Oops. I think it's great that we're potentially going to be getting one here in Independence. Do you guys have any questions?
That's pretty unique for a city this size, right? I, I noticed different videos, they're more in larger metropolitan areas, larger cities anyway?
That's where I have seen them, yes.
Okay. This is my first time. Made me want to get up and do something. That's quite an accomplishment right there, if you can make me do that. Just kidding.
I think including it into the central sports complex is, is great. It just reinforces the area, more diversity, age group. I doubt if there'll be some of those, I don't think, jumping up on the blocks. Yeah, that's, that's not going to be one I'm going to try. But I, I think the variety of the exercises, the location, bring more people to the area, there's always safety in numbers, and just reinforcing that complex even greater. I think for the, the grant and, and the money that we're going to have to invest to bring it in with that other project going on, it'll be ideal. This is a, a compliment for your research and completion of the grant.
Thank you.
Yes. It's a wonderful idea, and thank you for your diligence in, in getting the grant monies made available to us.
Appreciate it, Lacey.
Originally brought to us, I believe Mike, wasn't Mike O'Malley found this initially?
Yes.
And then took it to the, the chamber and, and kind of put a committee together, and then Lacey put the grant together, so it was a collaborative effort.
That's great.
But a great opportunity.
And that area gets a lot of walkers up and down Park Boulevard, and that would be incorporated into, that would be a good place for them to stretch out, kind of get their muscles loose, and then commence walking. So, and I kind of like that right there myself. But anyway, thank you very much for everyone that was involved that, that, and your diligence in finding a grant that's going to make this happen, so I think it's a good addition.
Since she's standing up there, in the consent agenda, we had a very large grant that she put together for seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and seventy, something like that, that, from KDOT for that Enterprise Drive. And that was a great accomplishment and a quick, quick turnaround from KDOT. It's very much appreciated.
Good. Remarkable is right.
Thanks.
Just par for the course for you. Right.
Yeah, KDOT's really been good to Independence and, you know, the willingness to, to submit a, a request to them. That's the first step, and that is, that is great to look at all the avenues to save tax, or to return tax dollars, because KDOT is our money too, so. But it's good to see it coming back, back here.
And it was a quick turnaround for everybody. I mean, I, I think I received five letters of support within, like, thirty minutes, so, I mean, there was a great response from everyone.
Good, good. I'd like to see that collaboration. Indeed. All right. Anything else, gentlemen, on this?
I have no more questions.
All right. Thank you, Lacey. I entertain a motion on this, gentlemen.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the National Fitness Campaign Grant Program requirements and any additional documents or resolutions related to the grant award acceptance.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Item D. Consider scheduling a special commission meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine a.m. to discuss the twenty twenty-two budget and issuance of bonds. Lacey?
So, this is really more for you guys, just to be able to, to talk and, and come up with, making sure that July fourteenth is available to all of you to discuss these things. There, there are things that we have previously discussed, but we need to, specifically on the revenue-neutral rate, we need to take action on rates to submit to the county on July twentieth is the deadline for that. And then we will have some initial documentation from the municipal advisors that, that we have chosen, just Piper Jaffrey, for, to move forward in the bond issuance process.
I don't have a problem with the fourteenth. Nine o'clock's a good time, so.
I'm good on the fourteenth at nine also.
I'm free at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. So, we will definitely see you nine a.m. on July fourteenth with questions, whatever.
Do we need to make that into a motion?
Yeah. So, we need to entertain a motion?
I move that we schedule a special commission meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at Memorial Hall at nine a.m. to discuss the twenty twenty-two budget and issuance of bonds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Lacey. Moving along, reports. Lacey, again, sales tax report.
So, just briefly, wanted to go over the sales tax report for June of twenty twenty-one. So, these represent sales two months prior, April twenty twenty-one. And I'm happy to report that we have again seen another increase in our sales tax receipts. The one percent totaled two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and four dollars, which is an increase of just under twenty-seven thousand dollars from June of last year, or up fifteen percent comparing June to June. And I will note that this is the second highest overall monthly receipts for any month in the ten-year history of sales tax. So, we're, we're on an upward trend, which is, which is great to see.
Great. That is great. We seem to be holding our own for the most part, which is good.
Are the, the stimulus packages assisting in, in that, do you think, or has?
I mean, it'd be purely an assumption. I, I don't know.
Just wondering, the trend, if anything comes down from the state, what they're telling you, what they're seeing. So, you don't want to get comfortable seeing that all the time and become dependent, but it is refreshing right now that it does allow us to have a little opportunity to build up some reserves for when it goes back to the typical income.
Lacey, could you remind me when we began to see the collection of online sales taxes for online sales? Wasn't that fairly recently?
That would have, Jeff, you might know better than me. That was sometime, not la, not in twenty twenty, but late twenty nineteen, maybe.
Beginning in, in possibly late twenty nineteen. And has, have those receipts been increasing over time as well?
I cannot see the diff, well, I can't really tell the differentiation between what would have been purchased online versus in-store.
Okay.
But I would, I mean, logic would tell me that that's likely been a contributing factor in some aspect.
Certainly, because before that, there were no online collections of, for, or collections of online sales taxes. And so that would have been a new revenue stream that would have begun in that timeframe. And as companies became more capable of collecting it, we should, we should have possibly seen a slight increase in, in sales tax collections for that particular revenue stream, so. Just curious.
When you compare two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, in our table, you can see a slight increase
Right.
in two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty. It's kind of like a yo-yo. It's all over the place.
There, there's a one percent increase from eighteen to nineteen, or a four percent, and then six percent. I would want to double-check that this table is truly showing six percent year-over-year and not from a base year. But I, I don't have the Excel file in front of me, but.
Inflation will affect some of it, too.
Certainly.
But it's going in the right direction for us, not panic yet. You've still got a job, Lacey, so we don't have to worry about, about that.
I, I, on a related subject, not to deal with the city, but didn't the state just release that they have seven hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in additional air, revenue for the year? The governor had come out maybe yesterday or today?
I have not read that, but possibly.
Yeah. Seven hundred, that they were surprised. So, anyway, that's besides the point. All right. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I'm good.
Okay. Lacey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
City manager comments. Kelly?
She's actually coming back up.
Okay.
She provided reports on the Central Business District Grant and the Neighborhood Exterior Grant on the Economic Development Board meeting this week, and also our Beautification Committee. So, I thought it would be good information for you to have as well.
Give me one second. I forgot about that.
Sorry.
Let me grab my papers. One second.
David, you want to go ahead and give the report on the Beautification Committee then?
Yes, Mayor, the, with COVID, we had kind of stopped our Beautification Committee, and we went a year. And now we have the survey back, and that is definitely one of the priorities in the survey. So, we're getting our Beautification Committee back up and going. And some of the focuses of that, Aaron gave a good presentation on what is happening in code enforcement. Aaron has done an excellent job in, that Aaron is a person that likes to work with people. So, she talked to us about how she, over the last two years, Aaron has been with us two years, today was her anniversary. And she works with people and finds them resources. She works with the churches for those people of low income, trying to do a lot of, like what we do with the Neighborhood Exterior Program, neighbor helping neighbor to clean up the areas.
Right.
And to some extent, I think she says seventy percent of those cases she's able to resolve, but it takes her anywhere from two to six months of continual work to get that done. And, but then that leaves the other thirty percent, nothing ever happens. We've now given her a new resource. You passed a couple of months ago where they are code enforcement officers, and she has the ability to issue a citation. Not that we want to issue citations, but it is, for some people, that is the mechanism that gets them over the hump and gets the property cleaned up or whatever the environmental condition is. So, that's a new tool in her tool bucket. I believe she told us she'd only issued one citation so far, because she still believes in working with the groups, working with people. But we also have a huge push to clean up our community, clean up our alleys, and do that. So, we're starting those processes. Other things that we are working on is getting our inspections back going in the downtown business district. Working some on the historical point, historical structures, historic districts. There's a certificate of appropriateness, so we're going to be getting information out to those owners if they're doing stuff to their buildings. There's a process they go through that gets the historical approval, because we don't want to ruin our historic district or our historic structures.
Right.
And they lose those opportunities for, you know, sale taxes, tax rebates, grants, and it could damage our historic district. We have a very vibrant downtown that's growing leaps and bounds and doing things. So, those are just some of the things we started. Actually, the meeting was really just a lot of, all of us recapping what's happened in the last year, and now we'll really get down to business in August.
Are we seeing the amount of complaints from the public? Have those decreased over, over the time, or they've?
No.
They continue to escalate?
I bet Kelly, I know Kelly and I both see them on a daily basis, and that's not counting what Aaron receives directly.
Okay.
And I, I think we, and I'm sure Lacey's office also is filtering those and filtering them over to Aaron. So, we, we have a lot of support in the community. A lot of people are calling in saying, hey, So we, we have a lot of support in the community, a lot of people are calling in saying, hey, hey, this person left a month ago, and this is what's going on here, they're giving us this information. And then Erin is able to problem solve and work through those issues. It's, it's a lot, she's a very busy person, so.
Yeah, she's coming to resolution with seventy percent of these cases.
Yes.
And she's doing all the groundwork.
Yes.
And that's what you, you want to see, you really don't want to issue a citation unless you're to the point where you're just not getting anywhere. And that's, that's kind of one of the last tools that you're going to use.
Yep.
The fact that she's only issued one, and she's been able to, even though it takes time, but.
Yep.
That says a lot about Erin and her dedication to the job. So I'm glad to hear that, very appreciative of that.
Yep.
And she's going out of her way, she didn't, wouldn't have to do that.
And she's made a lot of connections in the community, and people that call her directly, and, or she just goes down, visits with, and helps them. So I mean, it's, it's a great resource for the city and, and for a lot of different aspects in the city. Information and stuff that helps not only us, but the Police Department and other agencies, you know, somebody in need, she's able to find those resources.
That networking really pays off, yeah, yeah. Glad to hear that. Okay.
Erin's workload is also representative of the need of the community for her services.
Yes.
And so, you know, I'm, I'm not at all discouraged by the fact that she's very busy. In fact, I find that very encouraging that she has a workload and people who are collaborating with her, and she is resolving these, these cases. Because without her, they would be resolved at an even slower pace.
Absolutely.
So thanks to her and to you for that effort.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry about that. Okay, so the Central Business District Commercial Building Grant, this year was funded, the fifty thousand dollars. And so far, we have approved six different downtown properties, downtown buildings for this grant. Estimated allocation of approved funding is twenty-six thousand and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. And the total cost of these six projects, so the investment into the buildings downtown, is a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents. So that shows a return on our investment of four point oh six. So a great return on investment for us, and a great improvement to our downtown, because we have seen projects like removal and relay of bricks, tuck pointing, wall repair, masonry work, sealing, repairs to parapet walls and sealing roofs, facade restoration, and roof replacement and guttering. So I think that this is a, a great program that in just a few short months has already seen great participation. But there's also almost twenty-four thousand dollars remaining in the fund, so plenty, plenty of funding left if other buildings want to participate as well. And a reminder that it's a twenty-five percent grant, up to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars per project. So the next grant that the city has is the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program. And this is for partnering neighbors to improve the, the exterior of their homes. It does take two, two neighbors within a line of sight to participate. But we have seen fourteen homeowners participate in this grant. It's been so successful that we actually ran out of our original funding, but the Housing Authority Board voted to refund the program an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. So only a small piece of that funding from the Housing Authority has been utilized. So there is still remaining twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Total cost of projects that have participated in this grant is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and three cents, yielding a return on investment of three point oh seven. So again, a great return on investment, and a great, great improvement to our town, seeing this kind of investment in, in our homes, and keeping the housing stock vibrant and updated in areas that desperately need it.
Lacy, on that Neighborhood Exterior Grant, did it, when it was put together, did you, did it work like you thought it was going to work?
There have been a few hiccups. For example, I think at the next meeting, we will be bringing an amendment to you guys that, you know, one of the requirements to participate in the program is that you have to first be located in a neighborhood revitalization zone. However, there, I would say, I don't know, eighty percent of the town is probably included in a zone, so we thought that it would be encompassing enough. But there are neighborhoods that, that do show need for improvement. And one in particular where half of the street was included in a zone and the other half wasn't. So a neighbor on the, the side outside of the zone rallied her neighbors into participating. And then when she went to, to turn in her application, she wasn't eligible because her house was on the wrong side of the street. So we are going to bring a proposed amendment that as long as one participating house in the neighborhood is, is applying and participating, that if, as long as you can see that house within a line of sight, that was really the, the intent of the program was to focus on areas and neighborhoods, not really the technicality of you're on the wrong side of the street. So that is one that we are going to be bringing to you guys for the next meeting.
Do you see any other changes or tweaking of the program that, that you would recommend or might want to consider?
That recommendation will be coming from the Economic Development Advisory Board. We spoke about it at the last board meeting earlier this week. They didn't mention at this time any specific revisions to the program. We, we talked about lots of different options of things that we could do. But my takeaway was that they felt like, right now, this was the, the first step to take, and then see how the program progresses, if there are any other issues this year. And then when we look to refunding it, hopefully next year, we make any other tweaks that, that they think are necessary.
Okay. And what were the, the type of repairs or improvements that were made? If you, do you have a list of those?
I do. These were a front porch repair and rebuild, facade restoration, exterior painting and carpentry repair, awning repair, siding, guttering, window replacement, driveway replacement, roof replacement, another front porch repair and rebuild, foundation repair, chimney foundation and step repair, lots of window replacement, and lots of facade restoration and painting. So really, really great improvements.
Okay, and they were pretty much scattered throughout the city?
I don't have the addresses in front of me, but I believe there were four, four groups of neighborhoods that were participating. And I would say scattered throughout the city. They weren't, you know, all clustered, all four right next to each other, so there was good coverage.
Okay, okay.
And the, the largest investment from a single, a single applicant was twenty-six thousand, there were, there's multiple over fifteen thousand dollar investment from homeowners. So I think that that's also really important, that, you know, I feel like, although our contribution might be just a, you know, a small portion of that, that project, because we are limited, and the maximum is five thousand dollars, you know, this, this grant may have been what they needed to, to finally pull the trigger on it and get moving on the project, so.
Okay. Gentlemen?
No, I'm good.
So far, so good. Keep up the good work.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. That was it, Kelly, right?
Yep.
I'm good, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you again, Lacy.
I'm just very appreciative of our staff, they're doing an amazing job and working on multiple projects, and just very happy with the progress they're making.
Seems like everyone's busy here, I mean, in the community.
We're not bored.
No, no. All right? And that's pretty, you don't have anything else to add?
Mm-mm.
Okay, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Hayes, do you have any comments tonight?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Koflysh.
I've got a couple. We approved the signing of the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, and we were notified, we've got, what, one point two-nine million roughly? Do we have a list of projects that we're going to utilize funds on yet, or how's that?
Lacy's working on that, so you should just let her.
Yeah.
I, I do have a document that I can share with you guys that is just my brainstorming. I think that, I, I think that a special meeting, maybe, maybe we schedule one for after this next one on the fourteenth, where we can, can talk and collaborate about ideas that you all may have, and kind of put those ideas down in this file. But I, I think step one will be to see how the county comes, puts their program together, to see how we can collaborate and make the, the monies go as far as possible. So I would suggest that before we put any concrete plans together about what we want to do with our funding, we, we first go through the process of seeing how the county is going to divvy up their funding.
Yeah, I didn't, that's why I was wondering if we were going to look at it like next week, at our budget, or.
I can bring it, it's, it's just a working file, it's not fancy.
Yeah, if you want to have another special meeting, if you want to wait for the county, then we can meet to discuss it. I've been going through the, with the Federal Register that, that you sent, access the link to, and trying to get an idea, it's, it's interesting, the, the wording and some of the areas that it include, and then it's.
It's very restrictive on some pieces, and then very ambiguous on others.
Right.
Yes.
So that, that was my question, so we'll wait to see what the county does and have our meeting, then to kind of brainstorm, that'll be great, okay?
Thanks.
Thank you, Lacy. My other question, in the light of the building collapse in, in Florida, it brings an issue that we had with two-twenty-three West Main. One of the, the pieces of information that was requested were addressing and, and certifying some structural issues since the drawings didn't have any delineation of how masonry repairs and structural modifications were done. I thought, you know, we need to make sure, since this has lingered on, that, that council is advising us to get the right notification, that, and, you know, and then again, we're, we're approaching our commencement of downtown building inspections. And you see some of the reports and the articles concerning that, that information was there, but, you know, just bringing it to the forefront could have made a difference. And, you know, we've, we've brought it to the forefront of, of two-twenty-three West Main, but a lot of building owners aren't aware of the signs. I think one of the advantages we offer, you know, to the building owner is, is trained eyes to come in, and you're not always looking at something every day. And once a year, you, you can make notes, and you can see a significant movement in a, in a masonry wall. We've had walls collapse here. The building that Frank Doggs was, was in, the, the north wall there, you saw it, that it was gapped out, the brick were pulling out, and it never got to the point, I believe, of collapsing, but it approached. And by looking at it every day, you don't notice how much it's moved. But by monitoring it yearly, we can bring some foresight into direction for our property owners that they can start addressing issues before they become major. So, you know, I think we need to, to look at where we are in getting particularly that certification from the structural engineers, because the building is being used, and things change quickly, so. And I guess you haven't received any correspondence on those issues yet?
We have not received any correspondence.
Okay.
From the, you have not heard anything from the attorney, have you? Yep.
Okay.
I have other information, but it's nothing bad.
Okay. Yeah, that was, just following what happened there, you know, masonry isn't like wood or steel, it starts sagging, when it reaches that point, it's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, David.
Yep.
Those were the only two questions or comments that I had.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Koflysh. I don't have any comments tonight, and we've already addressed our public concerns, we don't have any more, do we, David? Okay. And then the next item is an executive session. I make a motion that we move, that we recess for an executive session for consultation with an attorney representing the city regarding a legal issue pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception found at KSA seventy-five dash forty-three, nineteen B two, and.
Until seven oh five.
Until seven oh five. The open meeting will resume at seven oh five, and that is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. This will be the, the commission, and David and Kelly?
And Seth Jones by phone.
Okay.
Yeah. I just thought you might need time for the restroom.
That's great.
That's just...